Silence so you don't interrupt the meeting with your phone ringing. You're gonna talk, please step outside. If anyone's gonna speak tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand and take an oath that you will not be called to speak. If you do not take an oath, you will not speak tonight. Thank you.
Do you just want to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And the matter's now in hearing. Thank you.
Have a motion to waive the minutes in the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept and waive the reading of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of May 27, 2025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN Hall in favor?
Aye.
Post or move. On the old business, ZB A 2510, out of Ward 6, JBC Architects LLC, for finding to construct, huh? Oh. To construct a two-and-a-half-story, seven-five-by-twenty-point-twenty-feet-five-inch side addition, increasing the bedrooms to three-fold and two-half baths. Finished height will be on the first floor and the second floor, retaining the current height of the roof as it is now in 66 Mill Street. The applicant or representative here, Joe, you have the floor, brother.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Jim Chen, architect at JCBT Architect. So this is the third continuance hearing for this project, this is 66 Mill 6. Just to recap what was updated for this hearing, the zoning dimensional form has been updated, for your record.
All right.
So the proposed is calls for raising the first floor to nine feet, where currently is seven feet two. And then the second floor will be eight feet, whereas currently is seven foot four. And then the overall building height will remain exactly the same to match the existing height, which is twenty-one, twenty-six feet point one, to the peak of the roof.
So you're gonna, you're gonna take this down on the first floor?
Correct.
So you're gonna take it almost down to the foundation. The first floor is coming down to all-in walls.
Well, the exterior wall, whatever can be usable, they can save that.
But you're raising it two feet, right?
Yeah, just two feet.
So you're gonna be adding to every stud anyway, right?
Correct.
Why don't you just take it down? It's not even, it'd be easier. That's your call, I guess. Inspection services would be there. I don't have any questions. He did everything we asked him.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor with the changes? Second call, third call. Call a part of the hearing closed, nothing for DPW. Is anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call. Make a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ZB A 2510, Ward 6, JCBT Architect LLC, for finding to construct a two-point-five-story, seven-and-a-half-foot-by-twenty-and-a-half-foot side addition, increasing the bathroom to three-fold and two-half baths, finished basement playroom, demolishing the attic in the second floor to increase the height of the ceiling on the first and second floors, retaining the current height pitch of the roof when reconstructed on the premises number 66 Mill 6 Street, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow the petition.
Second.
On the motion, CNN Hall in favor?
Aye.
Post or move.
Thank you.
Further, on the old business, ZB A 2511, Manuel Piva for a variance, a special permit to demolish the existing dwelling and rebuild the same footprint, three stories, compliant dwelling with the four-stall garage on the ground level, the premise number 656 C Street. Yep, and a representative here. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Manuel Piva. My address is 20 Varsity Place, that's in Bridgewater, Mass, and I represent the homeowner who is here tonight.
I just got one quick question. I thought I asked to make something like a New England home here, and this is far from my see that. Change the windows, do some stuff, make it like New England style. You're taking up everyone's view in that whole area, but yet you come back with like panels. Just a question, why'd you do that?
We removed the, want me to go through the changes?
Go ahead.
Okay. So this was the site plan previously generated. When I left the meeting, inspection services mentioned that we needed a second means of egress, which was a stairway to the second floor. So that was changed and submitted. So that was the change in the site plan, was that stairway. On the basement ground floor, the suggestion was to take the sixteen-foot-wide doors to eighteen feet wide. That was accomplished. In doing so, we removed the two storage rooms inside, because now it's space for the vehicles. Again, the stairway, the exterior stairway. And the window in the foyer is now bumped out to create a shadow line and a sill line that's facing C Street. On the first floor plan, the changes were, again, you can see the windows on the family room, dining room, and bedroom one, again, bumped out to create a shadow line. On C Street, we added a window at the end of the hallway, at the stairway down. We added another window on the front elevation utility storage room. On the second floor, the office was, it continued from the bathroom all the way to the utility room. We've split that room and created a grandkid's den. So now we have the office in a den. Same changes where there's a window at the end of the hallway. Bedroom two has a bump-out sill to create a shadow line. So does bedroom four with another window at the end of the hallway in utility storage. These were the previously generated elevations. Vinyl siding with a stucco on the bottom. If you notice now, we went to an architectural panel. We added a hip roof to the roof to create some shadow lines. You could see the three windows in the front elevation now, that jet forward by a foot and a half, keeping the contemporary design. And we also created a thirty-six-inch on and, or overhang that comes across the garage, and then it wraps on C Street. Exterior stairway, you could see there again. And that roof line comes out five feet, so it covers the balcony, where before it was open. There was the previous rear and side elevation. Again, going with the architectural panels on the street view, which is C Street down on the bottom right, with another window that bumps out to create a shadow line. We kept the vinyl siding on the rear elevation. 599 C Street under construction is kind of what we modeled the panel system after. And that, again, that's the same exhibit from before, showing the setbacks to a build-up of a lot. That is my summarization of the changes.
Because you put a roof on, you wrap over thirty-five feet. So I want that house thirty-five feet max. That's my, my thing. Whatever you do with your floors, you gotta do. Whatever you're gonna do with whatever, you gotta do.
That was increased by four feet. Yes, sir.
All right. And now I got one good question for you. Are these rentals? Are they rentals?
No, sir.
They're not? All right.
No, sir.
What would you do if I told you someone come down to your office today and ask when their apartment's gonna be ready? Because it's a two-family.
The homeowner is here with me tonight, sir. It is not meant to be rentals at all. No, sir.
So the guy was lying?
I'm not sure who the guy was.
All right. Go speak to your client and ask for an answer if you could, or get them up here, name and address.
Okay.
Answer the questions.
Yes. My name's Tom Antoine. I'm the owner of 6560 Street.
Are you renting out any of those rooms?
No.
No?
Yeah.
So why did someone come to the office today and ask if their apartment is, when's it gonna be ready at 6:56? I have an apartment there.
Who asked you that?
I'm asking you, you know.
Right now it's a rental, but like, we had a rental with, but the lease like ends up like this January.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we're gonna stop the lease.
All right, I'm gonna call our clerk, because they went to her, they went to his her office, and if you could, Madam Clark, please.
656.
Explain what happened today.
Somebody made an inquiry today at the, at 55 C Street and indicated that this property was going to be made into a two-family house after construction.
No.
After construction, not during construction, after construction.
But these are only single-family, not a...
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
As it's present, it is presented as a single-family dwelling.
And I, I can live in that, like, after construction. It's not for rental.
You are relocating from Linfield to this property?
Yes, yes. Because my business in Port Tressa is close to Quincy.
All right. You have five bedrooms, that's correct. Was it down to four now? Was it four or five bedrooms?
Yes, five bedrooms.
Five bedrooms. Five full baths. Everyone's got a walk-in closet, right?
Correct.
Then on the second floor, you have three, three rooms marked. One with storage utilities, one was a den, and one was an office. Why wouldn't that be in the first floor? Why wouldn't your den and your office be in the first floor? If that's your office. I don't get it.
On the, the first floor?
Here's what this looks like to me, just to me. Looks like those two rooms, den and office, are gonna be turned into a kitchen, and you're gonna have two units in that apartment. That's the way it's laid out. And I've been building for years. That's the way that's laid out. So you say it's not, I believe you. But that, that place will be investigated as it's built, when it's built, and I might even put in a deed, a year later, I want that film checked. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? Not in the question.
Yeah, I have a question. How can we get utility and storage on the first floor and utility and storage on the second floor?
We got the, we didn't get into the mechanical design yet with the architect, but the hot water heater and electrical panels, there'll be a sub upstairs, the main panel, well, on the first floor and second floor, it'd be in that corner with storage, obviously thirty-six inches away from the panels.
So you need two utility rooms, you're telling me?
That's the way this is gonna be designed, so each floor has their own hot water heater?
Like a two-family.
No, it's set up as a one thing.
Well, that's what you're telling me. Each unit will have its own hot water heater, each unit have its own storage.
Each floor.
Correct. Or each unit. Thank you.
Barry, your question?
I, I share the other member's sentiments that single-family homes tend not to need two separate electrical panels on each floor and two separate hot water heaters. So I don't care for the second floor layout whatsoever. It reads like a two-family. And it's two, thirty-seven and a half.
Mr. O'Brien.
I agree with my members on the boards, and it is an improvement over the Conex buildings up where they live.
Hey, still I'm not too fond of the outside of that thing at all.
It's not, it's not pleasing. And again, that's an improvement to take what you got there, but you're raising more questions than you're answering, so I would like to see some restrictions.
Yes?
Put on here. Now, the zoning in the areas, on that side of the beach, does that allow multiple families?
No.
Outside of C Street?
It's all zone A.
That's A, right?
And they did that because of that big apartment building that's there, that four units, three units, three big units.
Yeah.
And someone did, so they did it for them, going up the corner, because there's a big, there was a big utility had that whole big lot, which everyone's trying to buy now, because they're gonna move on, oh, switching and everything's out. That's why they did that. That whole corner coming down.
Yep.
Mr. Piva, have a question. How are you gonna handle the reduction in the roof height to thirty-five? How's that gonna change the laws?
Probably reduce the, the first floor and the second floor ceilings and change the pitch of the head to comply with the thirty-five.
Do you have any color renderings of the elevations?
No, we didn't get beyond the black and white plans at this point.
What do you, what's your plans for the color of that?
That would be up to the homeowner. We didn't get into material selection and colors yet.
All right, when you do, I'll get into voting. Okay?
Okay.
That sound fair? All right. All we continue is till, two more weeks, when someone come up with some answers about colors and all that, and the redesign, and we'll look at that again. We're not doing the eighth, February 2nd. There's not gonna be a meeting here, because no one's on. All that stuff's gone, I'm gone.
The 24th is the 22nd.
Twenty...
Two weeks is the 24th. Or at the end of July.
22nd.
June 24th or July?
July 22nd. I have a motion.
July 22?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Mr. Chairman, ZB A 2511, Ward 1, Manuel Piva for a variance and special permit to demolish the existing building and rebuild in the same footprint, a three-story, flood-compliant dwelling with a four-stall garage on the ground level on the premises number 656 C Street, Quincy, Mass. Move to continue to July 22, 23.
And I want a color drawing on that building. What's it gonna look like with?
With a color drawing provided to the board two weeks before, or one week?
One week before.
One week before.
As long as it's got four views, front, side, rear, east, west.
Four different views on the color rendering. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN Hall in favor? Aye. Post or move?
Manny, I will reach out to you and give you the exact date as to when I need revisions. Thank you.
Wow. Wow. Yep. Okay. ZB A 2517. You wanna hold back? Is he, is he on the phone? If you want that one or this one? He wants one last, right?
Well, that's the order that they're in.
Is he here?
Yes, attorney, yes, he is.
Okay.
Richard was concerned about 690 Washington, but he doesn't require it.
We'll move him down, then we did the council. We're gonna move Washington down, just counsel wanted to be here, he's had ready to issue this. ZB A 2523.
Alicia Nguyen.
Alicia Nguyen for variance, demolish the existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home, the premise number 55 Sterling Street. The applicant or representative here?
Yep, right here.
Thanks. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name's Kevin Posley. I'm Alicia Nguyen's fiancee. This is for the address for 55 Sterling Street.
You have the, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So what we're looking to do is Alicia's parents, they currently live in the house here with her. We are looking, it's an aging house, it's got to be around a hundred-plus years, foundations got issues, windows got issues. It's too small for the existing, what we're looking to do with it here for it, for the family. And we want our parents to be able to age in the structure, be able to go on the first floor and not have to worry about going down the stairs.
Right.
Deal with the longstanding hospital issues from the past couple of years here. What we'd like to do then is propose a larger house. It has a larger footprint, a garage here for it. It is slightly over for the variances. I do have my architect, Artan, with to help with any explanations here for it, but I think it's a pretty simple house that we're looking at building.
What are you building? What is it? Three bedrooms, four bedrooms?
It's a five-bedroom house. It's a, it's currently a five-bedroom house that exists there right now.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a five-bedroom house that exists there afterwards, if this new one goes there.
Do you know there's a five-year moratorium on curb cuts?
I, I did hear about that, yes.
So you can't, we got a problem, we can't get you a curb cut.
We can adjust the curb cut.
If they can use existing utilities, they're all set up, right? It's gonna be five years.
All right, all right. What's on the outside of the building? Where are you putting on that?
Yes, I'll add my architect, Artan, answer.
Good evening, everyone. Artan Sadiq, I'm the architect for this project. So far, we are just showing fiber cement siding. We have different versions of it, like bar, board and bottom siding, and shipped up vertical applied.
What's our colors in the same?
Well, we went to the client, back and forth about the color scheme. We have like a very light green and off-white for now.
You know, I hate seeing black and white. It just don't show what that neighborhood is, and then what's it's gonna look like with... Some people got some, some people got some weird colors that they pick, and it's not fair to the people that have, that have lived there for forty years and fifty years. They get a purple house and a green door and...
We are not gonna go that extreme, but...
Because if not, you could build what you, what you have, you can rebuild it. And if the people knew what was gonna go there, then they would complain, but they don't. They take, it's just a regular house, and then colors get a little weird sometimes. So that's why I'm asking.
If I can offer...
Why don't you take, you get a rendered color in it?
So we do have it, we just don't have it for anything color.
It decreased, it decreased off your screen, sir.
Oh, yes.
That's okay.
Green and gray.
Yeah.
White-green doors?
It's more like a...
Yes.
You've got a little green.
The color box.
Yeah, it does.
We're still trying to keep it light, but modern.
More light and blend in. Don't do just bone.
Mr. Artan, is this the side where you're also showing the evergreens here or the arborvitae?
Correct, yes.
It's, I don't know, I wouldn't wanna face this side if I were living next door with us. It just seems kind of not blending in with the neighborhood, I think.
On that side of the house, I think, there are existing evergreens going against that floor.
Could be blocking this view.
Yeah. It's not gonna block the second, or second story, it's pushing a block, sorry.
The warehouse view?
Yeah.
In a word.
Right.
All right. Like, a lot of these new homes I'm seeing come out with this, there's not that many, but there's enough. There's new, the new siding and, what's the advantage to that than an old northeastern home that we build with fiberboard and all? What's the difference?
Well, the material is basically the same, it's still fiber cement. It's just the planks that they create, they, they come in different shape and different applications, so the manufacturers make them available to us to...
Is it color right through, or is it just color on the face?
No, fiber cement that would have like a laminated layer of color on top of it. It's still, you'll still be able to, if you wanted to, to have...
It rots. What happens with that stuff is it rots and it decays.
No, fiber cement is pretty durable.
No, it doesn't. My neighbor, I got three neighbors.
Yeah.
They're redoing their houses already. It's really catastrophic with the spending to get things fixed, and it's like the bottoms where the water don't roll right sometime, because the fiberboard, it's not colored through, so the first layer goes. And it's really, I thought that stuff really, I really did. I thought a guy told me that once. No, that's full-through color I buy. No, all right.
Well, so we are not in CDs right, right now. We haven't done construction documents because of the process, so we are not married to fiber cement. And I definitely have seen the lamination, the lamination ripping off because of water penetrating into the panel, and that is basically due to bad implementation and application of the material.
Half and half, yeah. And then you can not be sure, there's no sign it don't dry out and it rots.
Yeah. I mean, I've had this case, I've had a project where James Hardy, the company that makes most of this product, they couldn't stand to see their product ripping off like that. And even if it was outside of their warranty, they still came in and replaced everything.
Yeah.
But in this project, if we end up using that material and not like some kind of PVC board or Bora, like Faiash panels or other clapboard, or other materials. I'm gonna do CA on this, so I'm gonna do construction observation, so I'm gonna sit on top of it. on top of it so that all the details are applied as they should.
All right.
So, and if they don't do that, uh, then I'm gonna be able to see if anything was, uh, not sealed properly, because that's what happens to the panel. It's not sealed how the manufacturer says.
Sealed in the drain, in the drainage, it's too tight to the bottom. It may be too tight and there's no way the water dissipate, it rots, rots out fast.
Right, so I was planning to use the rain screen application for this, so I'm gonna have a air gap in the back of it to, to let it...
Yeah, that's what you need, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, those are my questions, if you just came down there green a little bit, I'd appreciate it, so.
Can I add something more before the other questions? I think it was not covered properly. The only thing that we need a variance for is, uh, front setbacks. It's a corner lot.
I know.
We need two twenty-fives and...
Right, right, we don't have it.
So that's the only thing.
I get that. But you need something, we need like a little something, okay?
Yes, yes.
Just showing it that way.
Yeah.
Any other questions here, Mr. Chairman?
You're just, you're staying within the footprint, did you say?
Uh, no, we cannot stay within the footprint because the existing house is already pushed back, it's aligned with the other houses on the block, but the zoning code pushes us to move our new building further away, so...
I misheard you. All right, thank you.
And even with our setback that you're proposing with our infraction there, we still would be setback more than any other house on the block, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you gonna get around the, uh, moratorium on the curb cut?
Well, we have like a twenty feet, twenty foot setback we're proposing right now in the front there, so the cars would have to maneuver into that space to align with the garage and get into the garage.
Thanks.
Do you have, do you have an existing and as-built plan so we can see where the current curb cut is?
Y- yes, it is in there. Should be in the... So our proposed plot plan has, uh, it's an overlay basically with, uh, existing conditions. Can I approach?
Yeah.
So this is the existing house that is being cleared down and this dash line here is our proposed, the current house.
Please mark up the curb cut, the current curb cut for me.
The curb cut is here, and here.
Okay.
We're proposing it.
Draw the current curb cut on this for me.
So the cars would maneuver in the base.
Okay, so this is gonna change your driveway?
That's true.
Well, we can still work with this.
I understand, but this...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're okay with that.
Okay, so I think we'll need to see an updated plan with you working with the existing conditions.
Understood, yeah, we can do that. It's a reasonable requirement.
Right?
Uh, we just asked, we wanna understand how the plan changes with utilizing the curb cut.
Okay.
Which they can do.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good, same thing.
Okay. You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I got a letter reading from the DPW. Can we read in the record?
Fifty-five Sterling Street, case number ZB A twenty-five twenty-three. We have received the submitted above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. Number one, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Number four, the existing paving Sterling Street and Versailles Streets was repaved in twenty-twenty-two. There is a five-year moratorium for any digging on these new paved streets. Five, upon completion of the project as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with digital file.
Thank you. All party here enclosed. Anyone here opposed or undecided, first call? Step forward, name and address for the record. What'd you get here, man? We got a microphone.
I, I, I'm sorry, I just came from over here.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, I live at sixteen Ardal Street, which is not too far from this, uh, Sterling Street, Versailles Street and all that. Well, I, I'm not sure what kinda house they wanna build when they take this down. Where we live, it's a very unique little neighborhood. You don't go in there unless you have, own a home. So, I've been noticing a trend where people throw down their homes and then they build a bigger home. Like, it looks like one family maybe, but to me, it looks like a two-family. So, I'm like...
His was being built there, so you know.
Can I see it? Thank you.
Take that with you up there, that's fine, you can leave it there when you're done.
Yeah, that's definitely a much bigger home than what's there now. I mean, that's huge for our neighborhood. We're not that type of neighborhood, we're very unique. There's New England homes there, I mean, you know?
Yeah.
And so that's gonna change the whole area. I have already started seeing it. I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure. Am I like supposed to just say, okay, do it?
No, it's a twenty-seven foot, it's the exact same height as the other one it says.
It says, but it certainly doesn't look like the neighborhood.
That's what they put on the, and it isn't? They don't build it.
Doesn't look like it to me. It like changes the whole area, really.
Matter of fact, yeah, it, it's, uh, it's really an inch and, inch, inch and, one foot and two inches shorter.
Yeah, but why is there so much like that? I mean, it doesn't even fit the neighborhood.
It's probably the way the roof looks, it makes it, it gives it a different appearance.
It does, it does, you know, it does look very different.
It is a completely different appearance.
It is, it is, yeah.
And that's what I'm, what I'm noticing. And the younger people at a building, that's, I don't know why they like it, but they do. I don't, but they do.
I know, I was supposed to like, let them change our neighborhood. I wish I was supposed to let them change our neighborhood stuff for years, been like that. I mean, it looks awfully big, so how many bedrooms does this thing have? Five bedrooms?
Uh-huh.
Same as the other?
Yeah, same as the other, same thing.
I, I mean, I don't know. I just, um, I guess there's not much one can say, is there?
Say your speech, tell, tell me what you like and don't like.
I don't like...
I'm hearing it.
Well, I, I certainly don't like the way it looks because it doesn't fit the neighborhood and they just built another one where they took the house down and built this big monstrosity that I'm sure it's gonna be a two-family. You know, I mean, they just make it seem like a one-family, but then before you know it, there's a ton of people in it.
That's when you call up.
I call you again, right?
Yeah, you just call, you call and say, there's a bunch of people living in this house and it's a single-family house.
I know, if you can see them.
That's, that's what Mr. Conlon's here for.
All right.
He's the director, he will make sure, when there's people renting illegal apartments and people die in their homes because they're illegal and they go to prison, he's the guy that helps put them there. So, no, and it's happening, it's happening. People renting illegal apartments and what's gonna happen is something's gonna happen again like it did a few years ago.
Well, I know.
People die in an illegal apartment, no exit. They got one exit, they can't get out.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, when they died, right.
Yeah, I remember.
Because they, they want three hundred, seven hundred, a thousand dollars more on my greed. I hope they're enjoying their slavery, stinking.
I don't know, I don't know what to say, I just, uh, I guess there's enough room there for them to build it, so I just don't like the look.
I got one of those cross street from you, don't get that. I got one of those right cross street from you.
Oh, gosh, I, I don't know. Sometimes I wonder why do people wanna take...
We're not with the now, I guess. I guess we're the old people here, I guess.
I know, I guess so, but sometimes I wonder...
You know, yeah, though, I, I, I get it, I get it, when I see that, I freak out.
You could remodel a home so nicely, why do you, why do people wanna keep on taking them down? I don't get it.
Well, sometimes you have to, it's cheaper.
Well, maybe, but I mean, I...
The foundation's no good, the winters, the doors, the walls, everything's creeping up.
Tell me about it, I remod...
The electric goes, it's gonna burn down anyway, change it.
I remodeled, I know, I remodeled a home and I took everything down to the bare wood.
See, there you go.
But I didn't change anything, I just made a new.
Changed your wall, can't change a little window.
I changed the walls. Well, all right, I don't know, I guess that's all I can say about it. I mean, I just hate my neighborhood being changed, I've been there for fifty years. Can I say? That's it.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call? All our party here enclosed. I guess it's, uh, it's a new thing, I guess, like, I don't, I must say, I'll, I'll say I don't like that new look, but it's his property, he wants to build it and live in it. Tone down the green and we're all set. Like, not a M green, like, come down the street and you, you wouldn't need the streetlights, it would just stick right up. All right, you all set?
Yeah, do you wanna put something in about the green?
Yeah, he can tone down the green, he's got a dark green, he's got a light green and, and the emerald he's saying he's gonna tone that down and make it lighter. All something to match that's lighter?
Reduce the shade?
Yeah, it's reduce the shade of it so it's not like eye popping.
We gonna get a, a new driveway plan?
The, uh, I think that'll work when I hit. It's almost, it's only a year, by the time that house is built, it'll be eight months and they'll, you know, it's, it's seven, right?
It's a year before they can open the driveway?
The new one, yeah. Yeah, the new driveway. You don't remember, do you?
Yeah, but you just said it was five years.
No, 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 I'm joking, I was just joking. The four, a six-by-six, the six-by-six.
When they wanted a curb cut, they're gonna have to reapply for the curb.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. It was paid in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
So twenty, yeah, twenty-seven.
Yeah, next, yeah, year and a half. By ten, that's a ton, probably a year, but, I mean, if you look at it, they can maneuver in the front of that house to get in there.
They just have to figure it out.
It's too bad they couldn't just take that out, I mean, it's just a curb, it's not, it's not the street, turn it up, turn it up, we're ripping up the whole front to do it anyway, rip up the front of the, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't get that.
I mean, if they were...
I get cutting the street.
They have a longer problem if they were relocating it to, you know, as opposed to...
Sliding it down.
Yeah, as opposed to, they're gonna have to permit it in two years.
And it's only, it's only curb, it's like curb, you, you can wreck the front of their house because it's being destroyed anyway. Their old yard's being destroyed when they rip it down, right?
Yeah.
So you're not gonna wreck anything in their yard, who cares? So you're gonna do slide those out.
Oh, yeah, no, okay, I mean...
Really, it's, I don't know, I understand cutting the street, but I don't understand why, if your yard's wrecked and I'm ripping up your yard and then pushing it back and put, put gravel on the other side too, you're not touching the street, right? I don't know, I would think about it differently, but...
So we're denying the request to relocate the curb?
Okay.
Yeah, they can't relocate the curb, we, we can prove it, but it's, it'll never, they'll just say we're not doing it.
Okay.
So it's gonna take them two more years to get that done, year and a half.
All right.
They're gonna run over their grass until they, until they get the thing put in, two years and then fix the front.
Right.
Still spend the money now to fix it, all right.
Mr. Chair, ZB A twenty-five twenty-three, Ward three. Alicia Nguyen for variance to demolish the existing single-family home and to construct a new single-family home on the premises number fifty-five Sterling Street Quincy, Mass. They move to allow the, uh, petition subject to the following. Uh, reduce the shade of the proposed green garage doors and denial of the request for a curb cut due to the, um, the moratorium on curb cuts.
Second, second.
On the motion, saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Aye.
Host, move.
He's here, Washington Street next. Hey, is he here?
Richard, not here, into the bus, he's not here by now, he's not coming.
Where do we go, Washington Street? Where do we go, Washington Street?
Six ninety-four Washington Street, ZB A twenty-five seventeen. You wanna change the use to all present and commercial zoning? Uh, they don't like what's written, I guess, I don't know. Applicants?
Brian Burke, the builder for the owner.
Huh?
Brian Burke, the builder for the owner.
Mr. Burke?
Oh, you.
What's your address? Your address?
Oh.
Not seven hundred, what's your address? Where do you live?
Two forty-seven North Harvard Street in Brighton.
Okay.
Can you repeat the name of your street, sir? Two forty-seven what?
Speak into the mic and she can...
North Harvard Street.
North Harvard, Brighton.
Yep. Yeah.
Tell us what you, uh, requesting.
Oh, basically, um, we were here, um, a couple of years ago and we had the, um, a Board of Appeals to expand the existing building that was three hundred square feet and brought it to, uh, seven hundred square feet.
Right.
And, um, the, um, we, we were very specific about the use of the building. And, um, all the people we had to rent it, we haven't been able to rent it for a year and a half. But all the people we had to rent it, um, if they had any sales out of the place, they couldn't do it. If they had, um, even a beauty shop, they couldn't sell shampoo. So, there were restrictions. We had a photography shop, antique shop. A lot of people applied for it and the building inspector told me you have to change how it's zoned as it's recorded the registry of deeds.
Right, so every time you rent that now, you're gonna have to probably change it if someone else is going in.
Yes, they said, you should, you should put it in as, for all lawful purposes...
I won't agree to that.
Under that zone.
I don't think anyone here would agree to that, so that's up to the window. You, you just, you're acting for a blank, blank book, we don't know what's gonna be in there, no, no answer here, never happened. I don't think anyone here that would happen, give you a blank slip to rent it to whoever you want, next thing you know, there's a dope bookstore in there, we can't see that, no, ain't gonna happen. So, what do you, what else would you like?
Could, could it be, um, retail purposes?
Like what retail? What do you wanna sell in there?
You know, like, um, like the contractors, if, if they're in there, the contract we have now, he, uh, if he sells, um, like heating systems or equipment or anything like that, he's not gonna have it on shop, but he wants the ability to be able to do that.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Oh, God.
What happened?
Look at Charlie, wasn't doing too much today. So you wanna, but if a contractor's there...
Yeah.
And he goes in, he sits there and sells them whatever he sells them, the equipment's not there anyway.
Yeah, but he's...
To sell, he's just, he's just using it as an office.
But they told me that he can't sell any products out of there.
But he's not selling like taking it with you.
Only his services.
But, but, but he can't sell only taking it with you. He's not taking, you're not taking your air conditioning system with you. Right? You're not, you're not taking your shed with you. What's this guy selling?
He's electrical contractor.
Huh?
He's electrical contractor.
So...
And he...
So what's, he's not gonna be selling nothing. He's gonna be installing stuff in your house where you sit there with him, go over your stuff and your books, look at stuff and then, then he goes and he orders it and it's delivered.
I think he does a lot of new houses and...
Yeah.
He does development as well.
Yeah.
So he, I think he does sell products from there, but out of a catalog, that type of thing. We just don't want to put in...
He sells stuff out of a catalog, as long as it's shipped, it's not on purpose?
Well, this is just an office, yeah, that's what we do.
Just the office, yeah. There's nothing, no cash, we just, all we want, no products being moved in, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, we just want to accommodate what they have there.
Well, he can do that, but you can't, you can't sell stuff out of it. You can't like ring up the register and say, all right, twelve ninety five, fourteen ninety five, you know? That's not the business that can be in there. So it's electrical contractor that's there. Now, I talked to your guy you subcontracted to today...
Yep.
To put in stuff. And he's in there working on it. And he said he's putting up a file cabinet. There's five people in there working. I don't think five people put in a wild file cabinet, but, or cabinet, whatever, but I ain't saying anything. So I'm saying is, the front signs say it's an, it's an electrical contractor, we do plumbing this, that, we have apprentice opportunities, this, we're hiring journey, so is, that's what that guy that's renting it's gonna be doing?
Yeah, I think he does development as well as electrical contracting, yeah. He has signs on the window that says hiring now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I saw them.
Oh, we didn't give him an application as apprentice. I figured I'd be a cop on this thing. No, I'm kidding.
Jesus. Fifty years is enough.
Fifty three. Okay. So you're just gonna keep it as what you're gonna keep it as? Right?
Yeah, but just, we would just don't want to tie his hands like he can sell product, that's all.
You can't, he can sell products out of a catalog.
Yeah.
And charge them and have them delivered. You can't take them and give them to them in his company, in that little shop, six hundred square feet.
We had a pool company that wanted to put displays outside.
No.
You know, yeah, a year ago.
That turns out, that looks like junk.
That's where the pot truck is now, that used to be a pool place.
Yeah, yeah. When the pool went to pot, I go, what in that corner?
Yeah.
That's what I thought they were gonna work out. There's gonna be another pot shop across the street.
Oh, yeah, I see them.
Lot of money in there.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put a crosswalk with a light there soon.
Yeah. Yeah. Crazy, it really is crazy. I think of the stuff that we've been doing today. It's crazy. Like I said, maybe too old for this stuff. Maybe two pot shops in Queens.
Yeah, too many, cannibalizing.
So he can do what you want him to do. He can sell out of box, catalogs, fill out his contracts, it's delivered to the house, it's never going through the company. He can do that now.
All right.
And his permit does say that right now, right?
Right.
Right. He has electrical contractor in there. You're not gonna have, I don't want his, I don't want his work trucks and all that stuff loading that place up either. That's not what that is. It's not, it's, it's an office.
It's an office, yeah. It's very small.
Once we bring in a counter too, that's fine, and his parking space, two people that work there or whatever, three people, I don't know who he's gonna have, but he don't, I don't want no A D construction trucks in that whole apartment. That would be, that would be silly of us.
Yeah.
I guess you don't need us, you have what you need.
All right, so what we have is okay?
What you have is okay for him to do business through books and catalogs, no retail there. Can't be go selling hats and this stuff and, you get it, right?
Yeah, nothing like that.
No hair tonic, no hair tonics, no quick oils.
No.
All right.
All right.
You're all set?
Thank you.
All right. The big one.
So we're gonna, we're gonna follow motion to deny this?
Uh, no, just withdraw, just withdraw. He still has his own, make a motion to withdraw his, his application is fine.
Okay.
All right. CBA twenty, oh, yeah, go ahead, you're gonna read that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, CBA twenty five dash seventeen, Ward two, Uma, Donna, Allen, for a various to change the use to all present uses in commercial zoning on the premises number six ninety four Washington Street, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow the withdrawal of the motion.
Without prejudice, done?
Without prejudice.
So come in. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, move. All right, CBA twenty five, twenty five, six twenty two Quarry Street LLC for special permit variance, raise the existing structures, instructor five story, forty eight unit residential structures, parking underneath on a premises ninety two Willard Street. Counselor, you have the floor. Two diamonds in any. He does better at this, I think. He does better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of six twenty two Quarry Street LLC. I'm joined by a number of people tonight. First, Michael Kylie, who is the manager of the applicant, six twenty two Quarry Street LLC. I'm joined by Greg McDonald, who is, McDonald family is the owner of the property. And Greg and his son Shane are here tonight representing the ownership of the, of that property. I'm also joined by Carlos Sculte from C E C Engineering. Carlos will talk about the engineering in more detail in a moment. And David Seabird, who is from BKA Architects, who is the architect in the proposal, and we'll go through that in more detail. If I could just take a couple of minutes and kind of give a little bit of background about this proposal and what it involves. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is, this involves three different parcels of land known as eighty six Willard Street, ninety two Willard Street, and one thirty five Robertson Street. They form a triangular parcel, which you can see on the plan, that's really surrounded by all three of those streets, both Willard Street, Robertson Street, and Quarry Street. This property's been owned by the McDonald's who operate in the Common Market Restaurant, the fish and chicken restaurant across the street, and the, and the new restaurant called Ballast from that location as well. The McDonald's have owned this property for, since nineteen, early nineteen eighties, and they've acquired land over the years all around the restaurant businesses, really with the intention of, of investing further and further into the neighborhood. As you know, or as you may know, the McDonald's operation involves a number of different restaurant and concepts. And forever, the McDonald's have been making changes and improvements to those restaurant concepts and just recently redesigned a portion of the Common Market Restaurant building for a new restaurant called Ballast. But they've continued to invest in this neighborhood and in this community for years. Doing so, they actually acquired the land across the street from the Common Market Restaurant that, that encompasses this triangular parcel. And that parcel really was, since nineteen eighty five, really just had a, had a granite building, as you probably have all read in the paper, about the granite building that sits on the property. There was a house on the corner of Quarry and Robertson Street that the McDonald's utilized to house some of the folks that work within their restaurant complex. But the McDonald's have also bought other property in that particular area as well. I tell you this because there's a, McDonald's have a long history in this area. This particular site, as it's sat since nineteen eighty five, has really been underutilized. It's a business B zoned parcel, and the McDonald's over the years have been approached by a number of different business uses. That's been some retail, office uses in the past. They were approached by a pharmacy at one point in time to do a pharmacy at that location, an office building at that location, a number of different other uses at the property, none of which really caught the, the eye of the McDonald's. They didn't think that those uses, one, would be the best use for the site, but also because the McDonald's really wanted to maintain their interest in the property, because their goal was really to invest and own and manage these properties. So as the years went on, they, and they entertained different offers. They really kind of analyzed the site and they determined that, you know, a residential component at that location would really work well. It's a real, it's a real opportunity for a true mixed use. As you may know, Willard Street's been, overgone a lot of improvements over the years, but a lot of the improvements over, a lot of the area of Willard Street has been commercial in nature, and there was very little residential, good residential use. So they, they decided that they thought the best use of this site would be for residential use. So again, just to kind of go back to this property. So, so, so in deciding that residential use was the best use for the site, the McDonald's also understand they're restaurateurs. They're not, they're not developers. So they, they partnered with Mike Kylie. I, I think many of you know Mike Kylie, Heritage Companies. They've done a number of different buildings in the city of Quincy and throughout the, throughout the South Shore area, and have done really good work in the city. And I think the city can be, is proud of a lot of the work that Mike and Heritage has done. So they brought in Mike to do a partnership and redevelop the site and make some good use of this site. So this site is a thirty four thousand one hundred and seven square foot parcel land. As I indicated to you, it's, it's located in a business B zoning district. And it provides in business B, as you know, allows for not only business type uses, but also residential use. And when residential use is proposed on the site, it converts the zoning, as you know, to residency. And that allows in residency, a business B, first of all, allows for a four story commercial office building with very little setback. So the, almost the entire site could be taken up by building in a four story building of that, of that nature. When it converts to residency, it allows actually for two more stories. So it allows for a six story structure for the residential use. So what we tried to do as, as this site was, was being developed and planned, is they looked at other properties within the area, they looked at the zoning criteria of this site to determine how this building and how this design should be accommodated. One of the buildings they looked at was a building on sixty four Willard Street, which is across the Willard, the Willard and Quarry Street intersection. There's a, there's a building over there that's a forty two unit building. It's four stories from Willard Street, it's six stories from the rear on Stedman Street. They looked at also the Gridley Bryan School. The Gridley Bryan School has been converted over the years from a school to, to a commercial office building. That's essentially a four story structure as well. There was a brand new multifamily building built at the entrance of Home Depot, right next to the Gridley Bryan School. That's a four story structure as well. So they looked at these other buildings to determine what's the most appropriate and best way to utilize the site. And they came up with the design that we'll present to you tonight. As you may be aware, this matter has also gone through the planning board as under site plan review, which is required of all buildings over three units or more. And we filed that application with the planning board a number of months ago, and we had several, three hearings before that, that body. And it was very well attended by the neighborhood. In fact, we had a neighborhood meeting that was attended, I would say, by sixty plus people initially at the, the Common Market Restaurant. We also, a number of those folks and a number of those neighbors expressed concerns and comments during the planning board process by which this proposal underwent a review, not only of all the city departments, but also peer review consultant, to look at issues related to the height, the density, the traffic related matters, and drainage that Carlos will talk about in more detail. And during that process, in, in an effort to accommodate and respond to the concerns of the neighbors, the proposal was changed from a fifty eight unit, six story development to a five story development of forty eight units. So that, that, one of the changes that we made obviously is to, to the height of the building from six to five stories and the number of units from fifty eight to forty eight. In addition to that, and one of the, I think the main issues of concern that the neighbors raised was issues related to traffic. Traffic in that neighborhood is, everybody goes to, to the highway. And so three roads actually service that highway. Willard Street, you know, Quarry Street, and then all of these other surrounding neighborhood streets. So as a result, in the morning hours and at the nighttime hours, these streets are, are cluttered with traffic. So the concerns of traffic were raised. And one of the main issues of concern is an intersection that actually is in the far left of this site that you can't see off the map. And it's an intersection, it's kind of a strangely shaped intersection where Willard Street and Quarry Street and also Stedman Street come into, into that area. We took those issues of concern about traffic and, and really mostly about traffic safety into consideration. And we had a lot of discussions with the traffic, city's traffic department and the city's planning department. And in addition to the changes that we made to the proposal, the applicant has also agreed to a thirty thousand dollar contribution.
Touching screen.
Uh-oh, Carlos, running out of steam. Thirty, thirty thousand dollar contribution towards traffic. And that, that contribution is, is really targeted specifically to the neighbors' concerns about traffic safety. And the city intends to utilize that money for a traffic safety study. And that's the first step in which the city needs to undertake in order for the city to then undertake plans to, to make improvements to the traffic corridors in that area. And the hope and the goal is that's gonna improve the traffic safety in this area, but it's also gonna improve the flow of traffic to alleviate some of the traffic concerns that the, that the neighbors have had. And we made some other changes to the plans that we can talk about in more detail as we go through. So the proposal that we now have before you is for a forty eight unit, five story building. It has parking under two, on two levels underneath the building that, that David will show and describe in more detail. We think that this new plan and all the changes in the, in the mitigation measures that we've, that we've agreed to have directly addressed a lot of the concerns that have been raised by the neighbors. We understand and we appreciate and respect the fact that this is a big change. This is a change of a site that's really been underutilized, that's completely, almost really completely undeveloped, to a site now that's gonna have some life. And it's gonna bring not only life to this area, but it's gonna improve the area dramatically. And it's also gonna be a wonderful opportunity for those folks to have amenities right near them, across the street, at the restaurants that the McDonald's have had for years that have served the community. And we don't think that this is gonna have an impact negatively on the traffic, because this, unlike a lot of the folks that live further away from the highway, this is almost essentially on top of the highway. So the folks that leave this development are gonna be able to jump right on the highway, and it's not gonna contribute towards the outstanding traffic issues. So we're asking for, because of the zoning change from residence B, I mean, from business B to residency, we are asking for relief from the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. As you know, the site, the, the planning board, after three hearings, approved site plan review with the conditions spelled out on their decision, that included the traffic, the, the changes in size, but also the, the substantial contribution towards the traffic mitigation. But we're now asking this body to also grant relief from the dimensional requirements. And what we're asking for here is, we're asking for setback relief, to allow the building to be set back as it's shown on the plans. We're asking for building height relief, although the significant change in height from, from six to stories, which is allowed and under the ordinance to five, still is excessive of the sixty foot height because of some outcroppings of the building, but, but a minimal height relief, lot size per dwelling unit and also open space. You'll see on the plans that we'll show you tonight, we've done a significant amount of landscaping improvements that really don't exist on the site today. The, the site right now is essentially unimproved, other than with gravel and, and hard packed surface and parking surface. This is gonna add some green space to that particular area that doesn't exist today. And we think that a lot of the drainage improvements are actually gonna, gonna improve the drainage that runs off this site as it stands today. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn this over to David first to kind of walk through the architectural plans, and then I'm gonna ask Carlos to kind of talk about site plans.
Why don't we take a five minute break for us?
Yep.
Welcome back. Hey, guys.
Hey, guys.
At Willard Street elevation, we have, again, the two entrances on either end of the building. There's the double garage door entrance that you can see just to the right of the north vestibule lobby. So we have exposed to three living levels above the parking garage level here. Wrong way. So Robertson, you can have a look at the entry lobby, which is sort of in the elbow, tough to see otherwise. So spun this around a little bit so you can get a good look at that. There's an existing tree that we are saving that is right in front of the granite house that we'll be relocating.
Password.
I was afraid that was gonna happen. I just have to plug in for power to be able to get it. Yeah. Go over there for a second. Is there an outlet?
What's wrong?
I just ran out of power on the laptop. It draws down, so much power comes from that. We'll just take a second, set it up.
It's almost done.
And while Kyle is, I know that David mentioned the granite house, and I know you had an opportunity probably to read in the paper about the granite house. There was a lot of concern raised by some of the neighbors about the existence of the granite house. And a great solution actually was found. In our discussions with the mayor, the mayor agreed, had hired a consultant. The consultant analyzed the home, and actually, the granite can be removed and then reconstructed at the site of the granite, of the Quincy Granite Workers Museum, which, to be honest with you, is a fantastic site for the building. Albina, who operates the granite museum, has basically operated out of trailers there. He's now gonna have a brand-new building, and he can actually kind of show a lot of the artifacts from the granite industry in this brand-new building. And it'll be really a fantastic site that, I don't know if anybody's driven up there, but if you go up there, you can see the lion's turning mill that they actually secured so that, so you could actually go to visit it. It's a really, it's a neat site. And certainly, if anybody has interest in the granite industry, it's a site to visit. And I think with this new building being located there, it'll be a fantastic new addition to that property. So, thanks.
Come in. Come in. I think we've got it. He can speak without that. We have our dorms right here.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Why have I? All right, now it's upside down. Here we go. All right, I think I hit the last sheet of the Architecturals, but we were looking at Robertson Street elevation and the entry lobby.
Yep.
This is a patina-green accent that we're showing here, in case we're having an issue with green tonight. But at any rate, we chose a little accent color to highlight where the pedestrian access would be. And a little bit at the roof deck entry that you can see on the north elevation. Where that roof deck is, I know it might be tough to spot, but anyway, it's located by that green band. As I mentioned, the exterior is all fiber cement panels. It's a cedar wood siding, three-banded, so it has a simulated V roof look. Where it looks like brown, that would be the cedar. A black and gray, excuse me, black and gray scheme otherwise, which is in line with Mr. Kylie's aesthetic for the rest of his buildings. And I just lost mine. I was gonna go back to that rendering sheet. I lost it on mine. Oh, there it is. All right, just, there we go. It's the same relative, some of the views are, you know, relative to the elevations that you saw a second ago, but it just gives you a height of the setback of some of those portions of the roof that do pop up a little bit. And the only visible piece that I have seen is in the, sort of, the elbow, is the very tip of the stair tower at the top, which is the highest portion of the roof. And I, yeah, that rendering was taken with the tree missing, so at least you can get a good view of that entry. So Carlos can speak to the civil engineering.
You're not getting this password.
I would give it to Ed.
Members of the board, Carlos Sculte with Civil Environment and Consultants were the civil engineers on this project. We did the civil engineering, landscape, traffic engineering on it. So we'll walk you through the site, the context, and some of the other elements here. So by now, you're probably familiar with the site. It's outlined in yellow there with frontage on Willard, Robertson, and Quarry. And one of the buildings for comparison that Ed mentioned earlier was the building just to the north of the site. You can see the big white roof for context on the scale and the size of that building relative to our site and some of the other developments in the area, as well as the crossings over the enramps to get on and off the highway. So we're right, right up adjacent to that, so pretty good access for traffic. Next slide, please. So this is a demolition plan showing the two existing buildings that are on site that'll be removed, and then the hatching that's shown on the page south side of the site. That's all the gravel that's currently being used for parking right now. From a stormwater standpoint, there are no controls on site really to speak of. Everything just flows from the south to the north, across into the drainage system that's at the low point of Quarry and Robertson. So everything just she flows across the site and goes into the municipal system. We are proposing to remove all the sidewalks here. As you can see on here, one of the things that came up during our conversations with the planning board and the review was, was discussed that the city wants to see all the sidewalks along the frontage improved, including the corner that we're not touching. So we've agreed to that. So it's all new concrete sidewalk along Project Frontage. We're actually reducing the amount of curb cuts that are there on site right now. So today, there's two on Quarry. We're consolidating to one. There's one on Robertson. We're essentially keeping that one where it is today. And then there's a few gravel parking lot that are being consolidated for the access on the Willard Street side as well. And for context, Willard Street is one-way at this point, so it's left on the page. It's two-way just south of the site. Robertson's two-way, and Quarry's two-way. So we have access to the two levels of garage, as mentioned earlier. There's about a 16-foot elevation change, Willard Street being 16 feet higher than the Quarry Street side. So on Willard Street, there's access to the smaller portion of the garage from the top level, separate and distinct. It's its own contained parking garage. We also have the loading off of Willard Street as well. Trucks, up to a box truck can pull entirely off the streets. We have off-the-street access there. Amazon trucks, other deliveries can use that space as well for their loading. We also have seven visitor spaces identified in that lower-level parking lot, accessed off of Quarry and Robertson Street. So there's a good amount of space for people that are either calling Uber or having friends come over. So there's allocation of spaces dedicated and will be signed for visitors only. So we've identified that, so we're not overloading any of the adjacent streets with visitor or guest parking. As mentioned earlier, we have two-way driveway access on Quarry as well as on Robertson. Working with the city and the peer reviewers, we actually adjusted where that driveway was so we could maintain that large existing tree that's on Robertson Street. That also helps from a landscaping perspective, helps provide that visual relief along the frontage, keeping a nice mature tree. And then we're also improving sightlines as well. The existing building, as you can see on the previous slide, was right up on the corner of Robertson and Quarry Street there. So we're pulling everything back from that corner, right? It's kind of tight sightlines. We're opening that up to help improve that corner and make it feel a little bit easier to navigate and manage. It's also overloaded. There's bollards and traffic cabinets and stuff over there. We're gonna clean up that whole intersection as well and landscape that corner with a small monument sign there as well. We're showing areas for snow storage. That'll be kept out of sight of the site visibility area, so you have good sightlines coming in and out of the driveways there. Next slide, please. So the grading and drainage plan. This went through a thorough third-party review, as well as reviewed by Department of Public Works. We are taking all of the roof area, routing it to the subsurface stormwater drainage system, as well as conducting runoff from the perimeter areas and drainage inlets. It's all being routed through that stormwater system that you see in the upper-right corner of the plan. That's sized to contain and treat the one-inch water quality volume and the recharge volume, so it's slightly more than what the requirement is. And it's fully compliant with the Mass D E P Stormwater Management Regulations for reduction of peak rates of runoff, so there will be less stormwater runoff leaving this site today than there was under existing conditions. Water quality's gonna be improved, as well as full operations and maintenance plan's been prepared. We recorded it to Registry of Deeds to make sure that the ownership team keeps up with all the maintenance that's required for the site, as well as erosion sediment control plans during construction, to make sure that there's no sediment that gets off into the city system. So, again, very thorough design, it's been reviewed by the peer reviewer, and has been through the site plan review process as well. The grading is matching the grading on Willard Street, again, 16 feet higher roughly than the Quarry Street side. Everything's designed to be ADA compliant, so the sidewalks will be improved to help improve accessibility around the site, as well as into and out of the building as well, to make sure it's all compliant there. Next slide, please. So this is utility plan, fairly straightforward. There's utility access, there's available sewer, there's water, there's electric, telecommunications, natural gas services available all in this area. We're taking all the electric services. Those will be placed underground. We've allocated space for a transformer generator on the plan, meeting the N grid standards, so we've already space planned for that, so you're not gonna be surprised with the transformers sticking smack dab in the middle of the site. So we've already had allocated space for a lot of those utilities, again, bringing everything underground, so improving the frontage by removing all the overhead tables and services that are going to be existing buildings. Next slide, please. The landscape plan. As Ed mentioned earlier, we're keeping a few of the mature trees in the light green color that you can see there. There's one large tree on Robertson that we've worked to be able to maintain. There's also a large tree on Quarry Street at the side, at the northeast or northwest corner of the site. We actually notched out the building a little bit there to be able to provide room for the canopy to be maintained as well. That'll be supplemented with a dense foundation planting scheme along the foundation on all sides, helping improve the curb appeal along Quarry Street, as well as along Willard Street. A mixture of smaller shrubs, some perennial plantings, and a little bit larger trees that'll still respect other utilities that are in the area as well. So, again, very robust and thorough landscaping plan. It's really gonna help provide curb appeal for the site. Next slide. We also ran a photometrics analysis for the site, standard process, working through the planning department, showing that safe and adequate lighting will be provided within the site, while also being dark sky compliant, so not lighting up the whole neighborhood. So making sure that we're meeting the minimum levels of the property lines and not overdoing it on lighting. So that was part of the package. So this is the lower-level plan that you see here. And on the next slide is the Willard Street side. So we've identified some bollard lighting along the entrance that's at the southeast corner, as well as some other lighting that's gonna be on the garage doors, to make sure that they're safe as well at the entries. Next slide. So that's, so that's our presentation. I could also speak to the traffic to the extent that we need to. Again, I went through a thorough peer review process.
These condos are by, condos, apartments? What are you doing for assigned seats? Assigned, uh, pockets, one per plus, what?
Yeah, I'll answer to that.
Yeah, right now, typically, on Michael Kylie, we have his companies, the applicant. Typically, like we've doing all the other apartments that we have in Quincy, what we do is usually it's, typically, it's one per bedroom. And we do match that number, so the amount of two bedrooms and one bedrooms we match. And we always assign parking, especially when it's in a garage. People always wonder and ask why I number the spaces even exterior, because when you have an apartment building, if you have a number and there's a problem in the car and someone calls up and says, "Where is it?" Well, it's at space number 23. Can you send a tow truck? Or, you know, the broken window in space 23. So we usually always do that, and that way, we know when someone uses the parking. If we charge for the parking, whether it's $50 or $75 a month, we know when someone needs the space and uses it. If you don't charge it, they'll take it with the lease and then may not use it. So we make sure it gets used, and that's, that's what we do on our parking.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's the applicant's presentation. Just to highlight, you heard a lot of, you'll, you may see letters, you may hear comments from folks about density, about size, and about things of that nature. And all of these, those are all legitimate questions and comments. But you have, but it's also important to understand that these types of projects also bring significant improvement as well. You heard about, from Carlos, the improvement on the drainage, bringing down, bringing the utilities under, underground. You know, dealing with, paying $30,000 in mitigation towards a traffic study to deal with the traffic concerns and the traffic safety matters. These are legitimate things, and they don't happen necessarily with the small project. They happen with the larger projects, with these denser projects. And we think that this is a, a project that, a place that calls for density. I know there's some concern and comments from neighbors that say, "Well, it's right on top of a smaller residential neighborhood." That's true. However, it's also on a commercial corridor on Willard Street that's almost on top of the highway. And it's, and it's in an area that's surrounded by commercial uses that service this, these folks. The restaurants, you know, the Home Depots, the other, other types of facilities. So we think it's a really perfect location for this type of thing. And it's in, and it's in the West Quincy area, not in Quincy Center. And it's so, we'll be able to be priced accordingly to allow for folks to have, to have other options available to themselves. So we think it's a great proposal. We hope that you agree. That's our presentation tonight. If there's any questions, we'll start.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
To him?
I have questions.
Sure.
Where is your air conditioning equipment? I don't see any room for either cooling towers or condensers.
It would be on, it would be on the roof.
Okay. And condenser cooling towers? So there'll be 64 condensers?
Yeah, typically, 48.
Forty-eight?
Usually, there'd be one per unit.
Okay.
You want me to speak? Usually, there'd be one per unit.
And then if the rooftop, there may be a small rooftop just for the common area.
I understand. I just wanna know visually what that's gonna look like.
And also, sometimes the rooms, we end up doing split systems. We might end up doing, like in the gym, we might end up doing a, you know, like a mini-split. So, but typically, yes, that's, they'll be upstairs on the roof.
So sticking with the roof, how tall is your parapet walls on the roof?
There actually is no parapet.
Okay, so.
It's a flat roof.
Okay, so we're not, so we will see the condensers, is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, but they'll be strategically set back off the street. And that's typical in a flat-roof building.
So you won't see them from the street because of, because of the building height? You won't see them from the seat? What you're seeing on these images is really just the tops of, even the stair towers or those, those bump outs at the top. So the condense will be much lower than that. So even though there's no parapet, you won't be able to see them from, from certainly most of the angles.
Okay. And I'm looking at these three dens up at your roof level.
Correct.
Are there decks contemplated?
No.
Okay.
Those are just walk-up additional room.
Use of condensers and black rooftop?
Correct. But we'll, most likely, we'll strategically locate the windows. We don't want that for our tenants either. But remember, I keep reiterating this, COVID, we went through a time where everybody wants another room to work from. So if there's a couple, that is the ideal situation where you walk up to an office.
Absolutely. I just wanna be crystal clear, 'cause people also want outdoor space.
Yes.
And it would sort of be a natural progression. Is someone gonna be crawling out with a ding-dang on the roof?
Those are not, those are not proposed to do that at all.
Yeah, there will be no roof access from those locations. And if we can go back, Carlos, to the, there is roof, there is outside area. I wanted, just to highlight, there is outside space available for the tenants.
Yes, but not on all the, not on all the units.
Not on the roof.
Okay. And not all the units have decks?
No, but there, but no, no, but there's a, there's an outside deck there on that's on the second floor. This second floor actually has this exterior deck.
Okay.
That's utilized by all the tenants, and it's off, it's off the main kind of lounge and common room, to be able to utilize by all the tenants.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the parking. So my concern is these are rental units, and if someone doesn't wanna pay for parking, if you're charging outside of the lease rate for parking, that they're going to park in the neighborhood. So, do you understand, Marty? I mean.
Yeah, I do. But if you live there and you're paying the rent for a brand-new building, it's.
Can we require that the rentals include the parking spaces? What I don't wanna see happening is people chintz out, they don't wanna pay the extra money for parking, and now they're gonna be in the neighborhood.
I understand what you mean. One would be appointed at you, and if you're not using it, they just don't want you to rent it up. That's all he's saying.
Yes, yes, that's why that works for me.
Okay.
Because.
But I wanna make sure that someone isn't going to say, "Oh, I'm gonna save $100 and not rent the parking," and now they're gonna park in the neighborhood.
That's not how it works. It works like, they get assigned to them. If they're not using them, then they go, you know, "You're not, you're not even using these. Why?" "Well, I only got one car." "Oh, okay, you got two-bedroom place, one car."
And I think Greg will probably have the most of the problems, to be honest with you. If something does happen, they're gonna be trying to park in here, so.
Right, they're gonna park. Long as, like you said, one per bedroom, everyone gets a spot.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you want. You just wanna, you don't want chaos in there. You want assigned spots.
Okay.
Anything else?
That was it.
You still buying anything?
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wanna speak some favor? One at a time. You taking oath?
I did.
I did, okay. Just asking.
Raised my right hand and everything. I thought I was back in the army.
I didn't see you back there, huh? Stand up, soldier.
My name is Paul Burke. I live at 37 White Street in Quincy. I'm in favor of the project. Actually, I was in favor of the project originally, and I see they cut off a whole floor. And one of the other people in the last public meeting said, "What was my interest in supporting such a project? It's got to do with taxes." I live at, like I said, 37 White Street in Quincy. You all live in Quincy. You all know what's going on with the real estate market. 16 White Street in January, a nice little bungalow, two bedrooms, one bathroom. It's a nice little house, $629,000. That's about four and a half times what I paid for my house. 20 White Street, next house over, a nice three-bedroom, one-bathroom house, $800,000 and $800. That's about five and a half times what I paid for my house. If you look at the project, it's gonna make a big difference in tax money coming into the city. Hopefully, every, you guys know, or you ladies know also, every three years, the city reassesses everybody's property. I mean, I could see it coming. If the houses are going for $600, $700, $800,000, this, this project here is gonna be paying 20, 30 times what they're paying now.
More here.
Or more? I mean, maybe the city won't go up so much on my property. I mean, I'm not gonna be disappointed if they're paying more taxes. They're gonna be building a big building. I'm gonna be seeing it outside the window of my kitchen. Maybe after they cut a story off, maybe not so much. But I'm still gonna see the building. But I know that they're gonna be paying a lot of taxes. And I'll be honest with you, I feel as though that being such a big building, why would anybody be against it? Especially homeowners. The taxes here in Quincy are just going through the roof for homeowners. And if the people that wanna buy a house in Quincy, 41 Cornell Street, a nice little bungalow, about 900 square feet, just sold for $550,000. I mean, we're not talking about squonkum or house neck here, okay? I mean, this is a pretty small, back-to, back-to-nature neighborhood. It's not a very high-end neighborhood. And if the houses are going for this in West Quincy, the tax rate is gonna obviously go up in the assessments.
You hope the assessment goes up and the taxes go down.
Well, that doesn't hap, yeah, but that doesn't.
Hope it works this way.
It doesn't happen that way.
Well, it's gonna start pretty soon, because people, people are gonna get disgusted. We all know.
Well, the people, the people that are gonna be renting these units, they're not gonna be able to afford to buy a house, not in my neighborhood. They might be able to afford to buy a house in Lakeville or Brockton, but they can't afford to buy a house in Quincy, not right now. So they're gonna be renting these apartments. These apartments, some of these two-bedroom apartments are gonna be bigger than the houses that are selling for over a half a million bucks. I mean, I think it's a, not only does, they cut the affordability rate from six to five. So obviously, that, that sixth family, a sixth person that wanted to rent one of these low-income units, pitch a tent up in Faxton Park.
Well, the money goes in a fund for them, and these are the buildings that are built.
But I would hope that the, the project.
Goes towards the fund.
Is, is looked upon favorably, because you're taking a commercial area and giving a place for people to live. And it's not like they're traveling from Mezzav through the city to the highway. The entrance to, from this building to the highway is about 100 yards.
Yeah, right there.
I mean, they're going to Boston, they're not gonna be traveling through the city, and that's 100.
They'll drive themselves, you're right.
It's, it's a, it's a win-win, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging in tonight. Does anyone else wanna speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Any correspondence? 10 pages? Uh-oh.
Can't just read the cover letter. That's a lot about the DPW.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, quick, just give an overview. You guys got that letter? You've dealt with everything on the letter.
All right, ZBA 25-25.
There's a letter in fact from the DPW, one second. There's a letter in there, we're gonna read it, but facts are like page and pages, and they have to adhere to it. You wanna hear or see it? It's up here. Give them a rough idea with the, just three or four things.
All right, ZBA-25, 2592 Willard Street. Zoning Board of Appeals reads a copy of a written application to City of Quincy DPW Engineering Department. The applicant is responsible to this application dated May 19, 2025. Document is available to the public and be viewed on the ZBA website. It will become part of the decision of this application.
And they went through everything. They go through everything that they need, and they've already been dealt with, almost everything on that list. And it has to be dealt with if this does pass or it don't pass, they don't have to worry about it. Is there anyone who'll call at part of here and close the report? Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that too. Is there anyone opposed on the side? Please step forward, state your name and address to the record.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Stel Malamas. I live at 63 Robertson Street. I've lived there for 65 to 66 years of my life. I grew up in the neighborhood. I knew Jack McDonald. I knew, knew everybody in the neighborhood. Well, things have changed quite a bit, as you know. But I'm not a contractor. My taxes never go down. They never will go down. They're only gonna go up. The traffic is astronomical, as it is now, through the neighborhood, the parking. I think they should make them pay for parking. It's not required that everybody. It's not required that everybody buys parking. Because if I didn't have the money and they're requiring, what, so much money a month to park, I wouldn't buy it and I'd be doing what you said, parking in the neighborhood, which we already have a problem with. I live on the corner of Ellis Street. Sometimes I can't get out of my driveway. I have to wait. The, the, the street is so congested with cars now, and that's just from the general area, that it's no longer a two-way street, it's a one-way street because it's not passable because the cars are parked on the street. It's becoming dangerous to back in and out of your driveway. If you're coming around Robertson Street to go into Ellis Street, there's been almost accidents. I've seen things that have been crazy, people yelling at each other, it's going to be fights and everything. Somebody crashed into the stop sign, knocked it onto my property, excuse me. Knocked it onto my property and, um, they hit the, they hit the signs all the time and crash into it, right, go right up over the curb. Uh, I was at the corner of Ellis Street and Robertson Street one day and somebody stopped to let me go. And the person passed them on the double side, almost crashed into me and caused a huge accident. It happens, I see it so much now in Quincy. Anyways, my point is, is I am in opposition to the proposed project. I know all my neighbors are. I wish they were all here tonight, but I think they all got very disappointed and discouraged with the size and the massity of this project. So I'm in opposition of the proposed project and request the owner and the developer to abide by the zoning ordinance, which I was under the impression states that you can only build a maximum of four stories in a business B zoning district. I want the contractor to follow the ordinance and reduce the four stories to, to, and reduce it to four stories maximum, which would be more comparable to the neighborhood. The neighbors would be more acceptable of it if it was shorter. It's massive, it's massive for the location in the part of the neighborhood that it's going to be constructed in. If it's higher, it will not blend in to the neighborhood. I actually get sickened when I look at that picture. I hate to say it, but I do. It really upsets me very much. Looks like a Boston neighborhood. This is a neighborhood of mostly two to four stories. Dossies, been there forever, two stories. I went to Gridley Bryant School, two stories in a basement. Posing right across from Quarry Street, two stories in a basement. The new condos that McDonald's had built and sold the property to for the condos on Quarry Street behind the Fish and Chicken in the village stores. It's only two stories. It complies with the neighborhood. It fits in with the neighborhood. But most of the buildings around there are the same size. So when you put something this massive, everybody's upset. Right on the curb, no setback. The trees, the colors.
All right, man, you guys have to wrap it up, the time's getting late.
Okay. But I want to finish what I like to say.
You, you can.
If it's higher, it will not blend into the neighborhood. It will appear as massive. Robertson, Quarry Street are lower and that Willard Street and the building will overpower the neighborhood, which it, which it will. It will. I'm asking the zoning board to please consider the people in the neighborhood and deny the special permit and the variance. Because the people are what counts. I'll be able to see that building from my house down the street. I don't want to see that. It's bad enough when you go up to the corner and you turn the corner, it's like that, it's just, it's just massive. I, I would, I hope you would consider the people who live there, which, and I'm one of them. If you live there, I'm sure you wouldn't want to see this yourself. So please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side?
Good evening, Bill Zamsal, forty-six tilde in Circle Quincy. Um, I no longer live in that neighborhood, but I did and I understand the problems with the flow. This ask is over the top. The key problem is the request of a reduction in the setback to roughly twenty percent of what it was before. You're going to have property right on top of the streets. That's crazy. You've already got a bad enough problem, the short little run of Robertson going to Quarry, where it's a cattle chute, that poor house that's on Quarry and Robertson. The guy's got ballards in his parking spot and people are still taking his fence out more, you know, probably three times, four times a year. Somebody's going to get killed. This project should, I mean, I appreciate all the improvements they're going to be doing on the site, but you have to make those improvements to do the construction. You got to address drainage, blah, 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 blah. This project should be pressed to provide an easement to make Robertson a little wider street. Allow perhaps a right turn lane so people can jet up to, jet up on Quarry Street and get out of Dodge. You know, you got a little bit of trouble on the backside, those streets need to be worked on the backside on Quarry and getting to Bigelow and then Willard on the other side. There's enough space, but the roads need to be restructured. This is just too big a project on there. In terms of traffic, I mean, yeah, they're going to be right on top of the highway. That's a good thing. They're not going to be schlepping, you know, from the condos and apartments up on top of Quarry Street. But the fact of the matter is, they're going to be jumping the line to get on the bridge, get onto the highway. And I don't know about you, but when I drive around town, a lot of drivers get really cranky when somebody jumps a line in them. I didn't have a car for five years, I've got one again and it's like every time I go out, it's a near-death experience. There's a term for those kind of drivers, but I'm not going to use it tonight's meeting, we all know that term. That needs to be addressed and it's not being done. It's just not being done. Then the mass of it is just, it's over the top, it's just way too big for the setting. You could help with the setback, but then you don't get the forty-eight units. There's not an economic hardship here to grant this waiver. The owner owns the properties, own it a long time, they could make some revenue, they could go smaller and do just fine. This is an opportunity to make some money. Then you've got the argument, well, gee whiz, it's going to bring tax revenue to the city. Well, that's all well and good, but the problem is, it's not the revenue issue, it's the spend by City Hall. They're doing eight-six increase on the budget this year, it's three times the rate of inflation. They're not including about twenty-five million dollars worth of expenses, which I don't know how they're going to pay for it. The real budget increase this year, if you look at it on an honest accrual basis, they're at eleven percent and change for this year. That's the second increase. We're looking at the second roughly ten percent increase in the la- two of the last three years and we're looking at probably solid legitimate seven or eight percent increases to the rest of the decade. That's a spending problem. That's not a rare, that's, so the taxes are just going to keep going. And we've got a decline in commercial, they're talking about redoing some Crown Colony and go to residential for commercial. You've got the crazy project where they want to redo the, the project where the Family Dollar store is next to Star Market and they want to get a tax break. And they want to put it in the downtown district. Well, guess what? That'll cap the revenue from that area to one percent a year increases with all incremental new growth going to paying off the debt to build, apparently talk of parking garage to help out the developer that the city is going to help fund. That's not development, folks. It's going to help out the homeowners. And this isn't going to help out the neighborhood. Twenty-five, thirty units, setback, fine, I could see it. But right now, you've got some, you're creating a cattle chute coming off the highway. And you've already got traffic problems now. You got to rethink this. I mean, the, the setback ask is just out of line and you've got to rethink it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side? Last call? I'm going to call, uh, yeah, I got, I got a letter here that's, uh, yeah, just give it to, she's against the project, put her under the no call.
Uh, Michael Cindy Leahy. Hi Kathy. Uh, thank you, Willard Street Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting June tenth. I am unsure that my husband and I will make it. We are against the forty-eight units that are looking too dense for our neighborhood. Uh, my daughter tells me how many near misses she has and she's getting afraid. Keep on entering Willard Street, it's dangerous. Apartment building is not set back far enough from the street, there's not enough green space. They want less than half required green space per required unit. Aesthetically ugly. Parking is insufficient, eighty-four spots, twenty-four short of what's required. Height, they claim five stories, but on all stakes out, it's going to look like six stories, goes to extra space on top. Thank you so much for your careful consideration. Michael and Cindy Leahy, eighty-five Rogers Street.
Thanks. All right, part of hearing closed. There's some statements are made and people made and back and forth from, from the developers to the people that live in that area. And, and if this building, right now, if that building wasn't where it was, I wouldn't vote yes, I wouldn't even think about it. But where it is, yeah, I think it's an easy take. That's all, everyone's shooting right in the highway. They're going on the highway, they're going to take a left, go down, go around and come back. And it, it, it's not going to be a, a big, they're going north of south, depending where they're working. Uh, they're not riding to our city and they're going to, they're in an apartment. You come home from work, did your thing and you, and you go to bed, you do your weekly. Where they're going on weekends, who cares? There's traffic everywhere. Traffic in the city is traffic because every damn road in the city is hitting new pipes, new drainage, new sewer, new water. And you know what? When it's all done and it's all pretty, everyone's going to be happy. But it's like driving in, in frigging Beirut, it really is. It's, 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 you can't go anywhere. There's a new hole in the street, there's a new product. You're trying to fill these up. Do I think that was Biden money? That's where I think a lot of it came from. Re, restructure your city while you can, the government's helping you. So, uh, I'm not blaming the city or anyone on spending money that, not for that stuff at all when I hear that, you know, the downwind speak about what they're doing, I think that, that's federal money, but, uh, a project like this is something I think we need in the city. It's, it's affordable, barely affordable, I guess. A couple go in there, they can make their payments and, and start their life together, but, uh, it, it's a good project. It's sixteen feet difference in that. Talk about topographical trying to build something, I mean. You guys did it, I think you did a good job, a great job. I think it's a nice building. Uh, you get the park on what you need for the people and it's right on the highway, so I'm going to be voting yes. I don't know if you can, is, is, we're out of time. Is there any way to make that a one-way? So only people come down, they got to go down the light and go around if they wanted to do that? Have you looked at it? They're saying the guy goes down Robertson, he smashes it and gets his house smashed and all of them, right? So if you make the road one, one-way and, and it's wide as it is, there'll be no accidents. And if anyone coming up, just got to go around the block.
You mean driveway, make the driveway one-way, is that what you're?
Well, make the whole road one-way coming up. So people don't cut through.
I think that, um, I think that when the city does the traffic safety study, they're going to analyze all the roadways in that area, including Robertson Street.
Yep.
And, um, and they'll certainly make recommendations of some changes.
Yeah.
I think that's the intent. Um, I, what, whether it's, whether that one-way would work, I don't know, but I mean, I think.
It keeps people from cutting through and they're coming up, they cut through and then go over that street so they're not going in front of that corner light with three lights.
Yeah, this traffic safety audit is going to analyze all of those types of issues.
Thank you. And also, you know, this, this, they did, they went over this, over this and over this, they got it down. Number of units that the city thought was fair at the planning board and they, they approved that, um, may initiative, all right.
Does the council, the council want to talk?
Council, sorry.
No, it's fine, uh, you observed, thank you. Appreciate it, Doc.
Yeah, I, um, I think that the project, I understand it's dense and I understand it's in a neighborhood that's relatively close, but, um, the highway is right next to it. So if you're going to have a project of this size that's going to be next to a highway, I, I think that you're minimizing, uh, the damage, so to speak, to the neighborhood as it is. Um, planning board has approved of this and I think it's a good project, so I'm in favor.
Well, they've done a good job fitting this, uh, building on this interesting piece of property. But I got two concerns. One is green space and the other is parking, you're twenty-four short of what's required. You said it's right near the highway, that would indicate you're going to drive. You're still twenty-four short, I'm not finished yet, sir. So you're twenty-four short, your green space is minimal. Um, so I, I won't be voting in favor of this.
I share the concerns about the green space. Um, I manage property in the city. Your target market is likely, uh, people before they're married with children, they have dogs. And I think, um, the lack of green space where their dogs are going to go to the bathroom. And I'm especially concerned about firm rules on the parking so we're not, um, impinging on the ne- infringing on the neighborhood with parking on the street. So as it stands, I would not vote for it.
I, I'm in favor of it. I, I didn't realize that the site was as big as it is, thirty-eight thousand square feet, that's a, that's a big site.
Yeah.
The, the, the other thing is, is the way it's isolated from the impact inside of a neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's, it sits on the outskirts of a neighborhood. And an alternative use in there is they've already turned down banks and pharmacies and, and a list of those. Now, I have a difficult time with that because then what you're doing is you're running into the stuff that you got with, uh, the car, the car repair places, the automotive parts places, uh, Home Depot. And, and so I think of residential use up there is, um, is legitimate. And, and the height fits as far as I'm concerned too because the place on the corner of the, of Stedman and Quarry is, is similar. And it's, it's, it's half, you can't see it from Quarry. You can't see the first area there, but you walk the back and you can see that there's a large area back with a pool and park. Uh, I've never seen parking on the streets up there and I've gone through that. Um, I've never seen anybody parked on Robertson Street, I'm sorry.
When you're not parking in Quarry, you're going to kill.
There may be some up there, but I, if it is, it's got to be shut, it can't be somebody sitting up there all night on that street. Stedman maybe and a couple of the other side streets up there.
Yeah.
But, like they said, if they own across the street on two sides. And I'm sure if they get jammed for parking, they'll be finding some way to get people in those two blocks on the off hours, so I, I don't have a big concern with the park. And again, I think it's a good use of the property as opposed to a commercial or a business being in there with a four or three-story business building in there, I think would be much more difficult. Um, if you look in along there, uh, all the, the times I've traveled through there, I've never noticed the traffic from the adjacent residential buildings on the road. And, and that's, that's kind of just the way.
It's right next to the highway, I know what you're saying. Like it's an easy.
Yeah, even, I mean, there's a bus at the door too.
They need some places to live.
But that's, that's my opinion.
Counselor?
May I?
Do you want to address something, Ms. Barry?
Yeah, well, uh, first of all, I just wanted to, I, I apologize, I didn't mean to, I, I thought you were asking me the question, so. Um, with regard to parking, the, we're not asking for parking relief. Uh, parking relief has already been granted by the planning board by way of a parking waiver. And we discussed that at length with the planning board, um, and the, and the city's traffic department analyzing the, the appropriate number of spaces for this. But this is at one point seven five spaces per dwelling unit. And the, the planning board, as, as this board may, may be aware, has been permitting projects throughout the city at a, at a one point five. Um, and that's a one point five is really where they want you to be at, uh, at the parking ratio. So at one point seven five, we actually exceeded that. And if you know, the, the city's zoning ordinance in business B actually provides for its own category of parking in residential at one point five. One point seven five was what was required in a, in a residence C zoning district, which is what this zoning district, uh, becomes. So with regard to parking, we feel very comfortable, not only that we're meeting the, the city's demands uh, when it comes to the planning department's requests, but also we analyze this by way of the traffic numbers. And the city's traffic engineer and the peer review have all seconded our, the, the opinion that there is sufficient parking for this proposal at one point seven five. So I, I hear your comments about traffic, but I think that that's been analyzed by the traffic professionals and we feel really comfortable that, um, that we, we can adequately address the parking on this. With regard to green spaces, there's really not much we can do. Um, we did however, uh, in, in responding to the plant, to city's planning department, provide for a dog, um, for, for dog, um, bags and, um, and receptacles. And we, we opened up the area in the front of the, in front of the unit that provides, you can see in this area, green space for the folks that do have, do have dogs. And we put trash receptacles in there at the request of the planning department. of the planning department. If anyone, if anyone ever asks and talks about dogs, it's Jim Fatsies from the planning department. I think probably that's like the first question he asks of me whenever I present a proposal is, well, where are the dogs gonna, where are the dogs gonna go? We spent, actually, pretty good attention to that, and, and Mike knows, too, because he has other projects where, Mike has implemented a DNA system where parties that rent units in their building are required to provide DNA from their dog, and there's a system where he can track, he can track their dogs, and if they don't appropriately pick up after their dogs, they're fined. And that system's been put in place in all of the other units and buildings that he's operated. We, we certainly hear your concerns about green space, but we feel like we've added significant landscaping to this site where it doesn't exist today, and we did spend particular attention to ensure that there is an area where people can take their pets out, and, and the receptacles will be provided there as well. So I hear your concerns. We worked real, about two years on this proposal. We worked really hard with the planning department, made changes to this proposal to make it work better. We understand these, this is a dense proposal, but we feel like the location really fits and is, is well-suited for the site. If there's any, if there's any opportunity for the folks, you members of the board to, to reconsider their positions, we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, what's up? Is anything gonna change here? I mean, don't, I didn't know there was a dog thing here either. I, I had no idea. And I swore I'd never have one again in my life.
And overpark is also...
Till I saw this little cockapoo.
And, and overpark is within very close walking distance to this location with significant green space and opportunity for dogs.
Yeah.
I could be persuaded if there's a firm commitment that the parking spaces are truly allocated to the units.
One per bedroom, right?
Well, I don't wanna be in a situation where someone's choosing not to rent parking and parking on the street instead, and I don't believe the parking should be able to be rented to anybody who does not reside in the building.
I can, I can answer that pretty simply. So it's, it's gonna go either way. So if, if we include parking, the rent is gonna be higher.
That's fine.
And that's fine, too.
And they can go live somewhere else.
And we can, and we can just say that. That's all.
Yes.
I don't have any problem with that. That's fine.
And I don't want any spaces to be rented to non-residents of the building.
Absolutely.
Correct. Yep. Absolutely not. That would never happen. That wouldn't, we wouldn't want that anyhow. I don't have that anywhere in a building.
That will be permitted within the regulations.
So you're going to change it so the leases will state a parking space, designated parking space?
I will have in the lease where you have, if you unit two thirteen, they'll, they'll be, it'll be pretty much set up like a condo building where there'll almost be like a deeded space, no different than if you did a condominium. It'd be deeded space, but what happens sometimes is you'll get a complaint, and then they wanna park somewhere else because they're next to something, or they have a bigger car, or, the way they can get in and out with, next to a column because they're at a column. So we can do that, yes, but what I will do is I'll, I'll have it in the lease where it'll show the parking space, and it'll have the breakdown, but they don't have the option of not paying for it.
And there'll be no ability to rent it out to...
Correct. Absolutely.
What is the width of the average parking space in your garages?
It's consistent with the ordinance, nine, nine feet by eighteen feet.
Okay, so they're all, none of the spaces are less smaller than nine feet wide?
They're all compliant.
And then what about your SUVs? How are you gonna handle the Tahos and the Range Rovers?
During every other film that I have.
Okay. They can fit in the nine-foot spaces? Okay.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna change my vote considering that he's adding that language to the lease.
Okay.
Where the spots are non-transferable.
Yep.
Could I make it part of the conditions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll change my vote to yes, if that's what I understand.
All right, all right.
I will change my vote pending the parking regulations, being very firmly and clearly stated.
Mr. Chairman? ZBA twenty-five twenty-five Ward four, six twenty-two Quarry LLC for a special permit and variance to raise the existing structures and construct a five-story, forty-eight-unit residential structure with parking underneath on the premises number ninety-two Willard Street, Quincy, Mass. I move to allow it with additional language requiring that the parking be included with each lease. Is that how you want that word?
And a poopy check.
Excuse me, man. You're not called on. You're not here to speak now. This is our turn to speak. Thank you.
That's the only language.
That's the language you wanted? That's what you got? Yep. Want a second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Very much appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
That could is? All in favor? Hey, guys? Guys, ladies, can you sign this?
Sign one more before we go.